... Planning Commission, and I ask the Secretary to call the roll.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Meredith?
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mr. Groat?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Appone?
Here.
Mr. LoRee?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. First item is approval of the agenda, if there are no corrections or additions.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from the March 28 meeting.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Two items this evening, and significant items on this evening's agenda, the first being Site Plan Number 21-03, Special Land Use Number One, Stephen Messina for Messina Trucking. This is a re-review. If the applicant or representative is here, I want you to catch us up on what we told you to do and everything that you did to do it.
Good evening. Pete Snyder, Urban Land Consultants, 8800 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township, Michigan. This is a five acre, roughly five acre parcel on the west side of Merrill just north of M-59. It's been in front of you before, I think it was the December agenda. We had some comments, were tabled at that, subject to addressing some comments which I think we have addressed. There, I think there's an additional one that sort of popped up, I think that your planner will outline, that seems pretty straightforward as well. But again, we just went through the prior review and addressed those things that were in the minutes and resubmitted it. There was a bit of confusion about the environmental study. The minutes actually, the engineer just asked, had there been an environmental study done? If yes, present it. I just said, no, there hasn't been environmental study done. The land has been in the Messina family for quite some years. It's not like it's a new transaction where they would have, in the course of purchasing a piece of property, already done the environmental. So, again, I think the planners talked to the engineer and agreed to defer doing the actual environmental study into the engineering phase. I don't know if there's a, if there would be a planning reason that the results of any environmental study would prevent you from saying yes to parking trucks on a piece of property, but if there is, I'm sure you'll bring it up tonight and let me know what that might be. So with that, I am certainly available for any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you. To the planner.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. So as Mr. Snyder indicated, that it was postponed due, based on an environmental review, the engineer has said that they can take care of it at that point of engineering. The only other thing that I wanted to bring up is, I was at the Greg Grant facility that abuts this parcel to the east, and I just talked to Mr. Snyder earlier today about the screening between those two uses. Typically, our zoning ordinance doesn't call for any screening between those two uses. However, based on the use of the outdoor trucking or storage yard and this facility, I asked Mr. Snyder if they would be willing to provide some sort of screening. There was a lot of brush and dead trees in between the property and the Greg Grant facility. Mr. Grant has, you know, made significant improvements on his site, and Mr. Snyder would not be opposed to providing, cleaning that area up and providing screening along that property line.
Screening such to make the planning director happy?
That's exactly what we suggest, yeah. Again, this is the, this site's west property line where it butts the former, I guess it'd be Joe Dumars.
Okay. To the board, are there any questions for the petition?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Snyder, when we met in December, I had asked you, we had a discussion about this, and you had brought up, your client would be okay if the Planning Commission placed a restriction stating no maintenance is to be completed to RVs on site? I may have missed it, but all I saw was a note that said that no truck repair is permitted on site. Are you still okay with the no maintenance of RVs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize. We just, we stole the note from the prior approval across the street, which was specific to trucks, but no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
Move to recommend approval of Special Land Use Application Number 21-13 SLU1, Stephen Messina from Messina Trucking, based on the applicant meeting the special land use standards of Section 6.5. B, and condition upon applicant addressing all the department comments and engineer's comments.
Support.
By Turner, support by Appone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing done. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner LoRee?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Groat?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair of the chats.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Next item is a public hearing. I will ask the Secretary to read the notice as it was published.
Charter Township of Shelby, Notice of Public Hearing. Notice hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Compton, Michigan, has received a request for final approval for two phases that are following plan. Do you have a question?
If you could.
Aplicant Paul Jankowski, Legacy Village Land Holdings LLC, 38600 Van Dyke Avenue, Suite 100, Sterling Heights, Michigan 48312. Proposed use Phase 2, single-family home, 67 units. Phase 4, townhomes, 92 units. Location, south side of 25 Mile Road, west side of Van Dyke Avenue, Site Plan PUD Number 22-012. Sidewell Number 23-07-09-200-022. Legal description is as follows. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, April 25, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the planned unit development application. The planned unit development application and site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing, or all comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on April 6, 2022. There were 176 property owners and one applicant were notified by first-class mail on April 8, 2022.
Thank you. Ms. Dennewith, did the notice meet, publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it does, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or the representative will come up and state what they're requesting, their reasons for it, although I'll bring it back to the board, and the commissioners will then ask questions of the petitioner. I'll then open up the public. Anyone is free to offer a comment or ask a question. I'll take note of those comments and questions, and then, once we receive them all, I'll then bring the petitioner back up and let them address them. It's not a debate, we're just trying to, this is an information gathering process, and we'll do our best to do that before we make a recommendation. With that, I'll ask the petitioner or the representative to come on up. Again, anyone speaking, I need your name and your address, and then when you're done speaking, sign in with your name and address.
Microphone's close. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission. My name is Jim Eppink of J. Eppink Partners. We're land planners in Clarkston, Michigan. I'm representing tonight Legacy Land Holdings LLC, Paul Jankowski, and Steve Mansini and their teams who are, some of whom are here tonight. Appreciate everyone's time. This is a project that has certainly been before, the commission and the board before. We're talking about Legacy Land Holdings, or Legacy Estates, which is located at the southwest corner of 25 Mile and Van Dyke, just up the road. It's a 132-acre plan unit development that was originally designed and approved back in 2006. Phase 1 of that Lawson Boulevard was developed on the far west side, a single-family neighborhood of about, ultimately about 97 homes or so. What we have done is come back to your commission and to the board a few times since 2007. There is obviously the economic downturn. We came back most recently at the middle of 2020 and amended the PUD. At that point, we removed about almost 30% of the density, significant portion of the multiple-family, added some additional single-family homes. And at that time in 2020, your commission voted unanimously to approve those modifications, and then we went to the board. The supervisor was kind enough to host a couple of study sessions, then ultimately the board also unanimously passed that amended PUD. This week, or tonight, we have submitted to you for consideration and approval of two of the five remaining phases. Phase 2 is a single-family neighborhood consisting of 67 additional single-family homes, similar in size and dimension and shape to the adjacent single-family homes that are along Lawson Creek. And then Phase 4, which are the townhome component, 96 townhomes that will be constructed along Grand Boulevard to what was formerly Legacy Boulevard, the diagonal road running from Van Dyke west into the site. We've provided an awful lot of information, both in terms of the architecture, the open space, the setbacks. I think what's important from my point of view at least is that everything that we've presented to you is exactly consistent with what was presented to you 18 months ago with the amended site plan. So same, same, same exact layout, same density, same setback, same open space, showing that we've met the requirements of the PUD. We met the original PUD back in '07, and then the amended PUD. We do recognize, of course, that your community, the planning staff, Julie and her team, have spent an awful lot of time reviewing this. We did receive a review letter that had a number of items on there. Certainly, we've gone through those, and we, you know, know that a lot of them are procedural, certainly some things that we owe the township in terms of revised submissions and some additional information. So we're here tonight to answer questions, to provide additional detail. We think that it would be appropriate to allow us to come back and submit in the meantime and make some of those additional requests for additional information, some procedural things, to make sure that the township and the community has everything prior to asking for that recommendation for approval of Phases 2 and Phases 4. So with that, I'm happy to answer additional questions, provide any insight, or obviously here tonight to listen to the community as well.
Okay, thank you. I was derelict in one item. I forgot to ask the Secretary if we'd receive any correspondence on this request, and I know that we did. If you want to just summarize what we did receive?
Received, Mr. Chair. Correspondence, it was emailed to us by a David, David Graham, and he has questions regarding the traffic, most importantly, the entrance, the only one entrance now into the sub, wanting another entrance. That is his big concern with getting in and out of the subdivision as it is right now.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask the planner to offer her review before we take more questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moffett. So Mr. Eppink did a great job of summarizing this overall plan. There's still some outstanding items, I think, that we need to address. Some of them are just minor details on the site plans. The others, I believe, that we can discuss, and he is absolutely correct, what was presented back in 2020 is what they are presenting now. There are, there, we certainly don't want to move the goalpost on them. There have been changes overall in the past 15 years on this site plan. So basically, you know, these six-foot side yard setbacks, I think that would be acceptable as long as we have a solution for the egress windows, because we certainly don't want those to encroach into the side yard setback. We're going to need master deed and bylaws for these two phases. Some of the, you know, entrance landscaping between the units, sign plan for this development, I'm not sure if they're going to be proposing development signs for each portion of this development. Also, some landscaping, but overall, you know, the perimeter, they don't meet the perimeter setbacks for the multiple-family, but that's not uncommon for the Planning Commission to allow a reduction in that by 25%. The one item is the parking spaces in the cul-de-sac. That's on the main, on the main drag, there's some parking spaces right off to the north and south of the cul-de-sac. I'm not sure that that's a safe area for people to be driving, especially if they're turning around in that cul-de-sac and there's parking spaces. Maybe we can look to perhaps relocate those few parking spaces elsewhere on the plan.
The traffic circles.
In the traffic circles, correct, correct. But, like I said, most of it is, is things that I believe we can take care of, you know, on a separate meeting with the engineer and Mr. Eppink and his team.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Eppink, you want to come back up? No, I was going to bring him back to the board for questions. One of the notes, and frankly, it's something that's sort of struck me, and as the person that made the original motion back in 2006 to approve this thing, I think, oh man, how long have I been on this thing? I'm sure many will say too far, too long.
That was before you had a beard, and then you had a beard, and you don't have a beard.
Yeah, it's gone, yeah, right. And maybe a couple more gray hairs, but I blame my sons. I do recall that there was an extra, there was another entrance onto 25, and I'm not sure at what machination it changed to go from, from 2 to 1, and it's, and it's moved, you know, this, we were probably seeing, what, four or five different versions, sort of, of this thing. So back in 2006, the township was offered, you know, was a different spot, and the letter of the person that had sent here, you know, makes that, makes that point, I think it's a valid one. So it did cause me to go back and take a look. It's a lot of traffic to put off. Van Dyke could probably accept a little bit, you know, but you've got all that, there's still a lot of density for really only two, you know, one on 25 Mile and one on Van Dyke. Now, I would envision that you'll probably, and I don't think, I think we probably need more detail on what that entrance off of Van Dyke's going to be, even though it's in a different phase, it's really affected by Phase 4, and I don't know, Julie, if you mentioned that in your, in your, in your comment. And probably envision a light being there, and maybe that, you know, that helps alleviate that somewhat. But if you look at that, that single entrance onto 25 Mile Road, virtually all the single-family homes, to which there are, what, 90 some lots, plus probably a good portion of the multifamily that does get developed into the north part of Phase 4, and then the Phase 6, I think is what the apartments, is going to go, or anyone that wants to go west, likely won't want to turn left onto, onto Van Dyke, and then left again onto 25 Mile, they're all going to come out there. And that's a challenging spot to begin with, because it does taper there. It's an awful lot of cars to put onto 25 Mile Road. And granted, this thing has been approved, but it's evolved over time, you know, from a version that did address those things, to one that, that it doesn't currently, and given the growth of the township, the development, the, the multiple developments that have occurred, you know, within that, you know, that's sort of a one-mile radius, you know, I assume so. Yeah. What's that? Oh. 10 minutes? Okay, yeah. All right. To, wow, I think the only ones that, yeah, good, yeah, thank you. Looking for somebody. Pardon? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So maybe in Oakland Township, it takes them 10 minutes, but in Shelby Township, it's, you know, 30 seconds. Did you know there was anyone else out in the hall? I don't, did anyone else? No. Give them a second.
Do you mind if I ask you a question before I break? I was here for Site Plan 2103, and it wasn't clear to me at all if that was approved for RVs or RVs and trucks. I'm the housemate from west of that lot, and there's trucks, more semi-trucks back there. I'm going to be surrounded on three sides with semi-trucks. That wind blows from the west most of the time, I'll be getting asphyxiated out of my house.
I believe it was, I think cabs only, right? So not, not the full truck, just the cab?
Cabs.
Yeah.
We're allowing, we're allowing the trucks themselves, but no trailers?
Right. That's my understanding. Yeah.
How many trucks?
The same as last time.
30?
So I'd never taken a look at the plan, but it would be the same, the same plan as the last time.
So did I get a chance to object to this at any point? I was here at the December meeting.
That was the public here.
Okay.
So that's what we have, public, public.
Right. So what do I do when I get these 25 or 30 trucks with that diesel exhaust blowing in the west at my house? I'm getting this, off my car.
If they're violating one of the township codes, you call the, you call the ordinance department, ordinance enforcement.
It's something that we should just print down.
Okay. We're going to, we're going to get started back again, so.
All right.
Okay, we'll reconvene the meeting. Mr. Eppink, you want to continue?
Well, I appreciate, so just to follow up the few final points, so we're going to connect that, that road. We believe, based on our engineer studies, that a lot of that western and southern traffic will actually travel through the site. We've also, with the 2020 update or amendment, added that roundabout and really have worked, you know, very, very hard and diligently to prevent cut-through traffic. So, yes, the original site plan had an extra cut, but that was really to anticipate about 188 additional multifamily homes. When we cut that density in half by almost, or cut it down by about 30%, shifted to lower density units and single-family homes. We also tried to get rid of, cut through traffic, put in the roundabout, and in that interim time, an additional road, I think it's called Timber Ridge, was built on the north side of 25, and so now we're looking at opposing left-hand turns, which weren't there in 2007, I believe. So all things equal, we believe we've got the circulation. We believe that we've eliminated cut-through traffic, or the temptation of cut-through traffic, as well as provided greater flexibility for people in Phase 1 and Phase 2. The last thing I'll note, just is in terms of circulation, is with construction traffic, certainly the, the folks in Phase 1 have had to deal with a lot of construction traffic just through the creation of their own neighborhood. We will provide a construction lane south of Phase 2, so closer to Van Dyke, and all construction traffic, both for the infrastructure as well as all the building, the actual housing, will all come through there. So no construction traffic will be going through the first phase throughout any of this development.
Okay. You know, because this has taken so long, and I wanted to qualify that, too. It, let me ask the planner, so typically in a, in a single-family development, what's, what are the standards for multiple entrances to save, this was a standalone subdivision?
One entrance for every 30 homes, and two access points for anything over 30.
Yeah, so, I mean, although it's less, and granted, I'm going to acknowledge that this, this was orig, as it was originally zoned back forever ago, was far more dense, and the whole process of the PUD is to sort of negotiate. And the township did, you know, that, you know, for allowing the multiple use, the developer and owner did give up, you know, some densities, so there is a trade-off. Because it took so long, you know, the township looks different. Decisions were made, you know, I mean, not seeing, you know, what potentially could have gotten developed. Decisions were made that do create, you know, potentially some other issues, and it's just something I'm trying to, to, to wrap around, myself around. To the.
Mr. Chairman, if I just may respond to that, that last comment, we're, as I said, we're, we're looking to have feedback tonight, and I think this is very good and healthy and helpful. We will and are committed to continue to work with the township. We certainly are interested in setting up a subcommittee meeting or continuing to work. We know that some of our earlier discussions were with the county, we'll follow up with the county on that, so we hear you. We think we've provided the best solution, but we're, we certainly will continue that conversation, both with the township and with the county.
Great, thank you. To the board. Mr. Turner?
How did you guess? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Eppink, I just have a question. I've heard what you said about the circulation pattern and your review of how you think traffic's going to go, and you're not going to cut through, obviously, to get around the intersection. What would it hurt you to take out one lot and create one more entrance?
Well, it's not so much what it'll hurt us, but just what does that do to traffic, right? Everything has a cause and effect. I think what you'll be looking at is, and again, I'm not a traffic engineer, this is why we'll continue to work with our traffic engineers, yours and the counties, but when I look at it, we know that the commercial will have at least one, if not two, entrances closer to Van Dyke. We've already got one at Lawson Creek, and we've got two, and then a third just to the west on the north side of 25 Mile. So from traffic point of view, we always try and start to look at opposing traffic and people making offsetting lefts. And so where there may not be harm from a development point of view, we, you know, I'm as concerned as you are in making sure it's safe. So we believe that there's a lot going on there. I think the other thing is, is that frankly, we just don't want to encourage cut-through traffic, and the more porous we make it, you know, there, we know for sure, just looking at Shelby Township as well as every other township, interconnected neighborhoods make a lot of sense. Making them too, too porous at very busy intersections like this can actually make these neighborhoods dangerous, and so we're trying to balance that with you.
I certainly understand that, and I can see that if you were to remove lot number three, that would probably be too close to the one to the west. However, maybe lot number seven on your plan, which is a little further down. I don't know, this would be for the county road engineers to determine whether that would be too close. I understand multiple entrances and exits, as you can create accidents. I understand it, but I know we're probably going to hear a lot tonight about the need for another entrance on this site, so I'm trying to figure out, I don't see how just one lot would, especially if it's lot number seven, would hurt your plan at all, and it might help, actually help address some of the issues, so I just wanted to bring that up.
I appreciate it. Not to split hairs, it'll probably take two lots, and of course, we're in the development business, only because then we create two corner lots, which will have to be wider, plus we'll have to have a right-of-way, but I hear what you're saying, and we'll, we'll continue to look at it.
Thank you.
Yeah. I don't think anyone wants to engineer the, this, the project, or re-engineer after you've put all this effort into it, however, I mean, you understand.
It's an opportunity to look at it.
Yeah, I think we need to just, we need to at least get our, we need to be comfortable with that. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear from the public, from the residents.
Yeah, I believe that's how this process works. Yeah, I believe that's how this process works.
And, and, given the opportunity first, before I speak, or you want us to address it first, and then...
Um, sure.
Doesn't make any difference?
What's that? Well, generally, we have a process that we, we, we go by.
Okay, let's, let's follow the process.
Okay.
This is amendment, twenty-twenty amendment. Original plans were put together two thousand and seven.
Correct.
All right, can you hear me? Yeah, I think you can hear me now. So, as I stated, that this is amendment, twenty-twenty amendment. Originally, this was put together in two thousand and seven. I think fifteen years or sixteen years, a lot has changed, and I think we need to take a closer look. I, I, I like the phase one development. I, I drive there. I enjoy the different type of homes there, and single-family, beautiful lots. What's the frontage on those lots?
Those are seventy-foot wide lots?
Seventy? Okay. Any reason why this could not be duplicated in six, seventy-feet lot, which you got is sixty-seven feet? Why, why...
Why the difference?
Why, why cutting point three? Why, why, why skimping on, on the frontage?
Well, it wasn't skimping as much as learning from the experience of phase one. With phase one, where we had three-car garages, which was a popular option, it caused, both in terms of the, the air-conditioning units and the side setbacks, what, what happened was, as the builders got building those homes, they kept coming back to the building department and asking for deviations or variances from, to, to achieve those setbacks. We worked with Ms. Mitchich, Missich, and the planning department and said, let's, rather than come back for variances, the goal really would be to come back for no variances, so let's design this based on the site plan of phase one. So, these, the, the lot widths and the setbacks will match exactly phase one, so if you like phase one, you're gonna love phase two. The, the building-to-building, if I had two homes next to each other, both with three-car garages, they would be the same distance in phase two as they would in phase one. If, if, if those don't choose the three-car garages, then I've got an awful lot more room between two, two adjacent homes. So, it's, it's a, it's a technical detail to match phase two, I'm sorry, to match phase one, and not require any ongoing variances or visits back to the building and planning department.
Why couldn't you go the other way and go seventy-five feet?
Well, then it wouldn't be the same as, say, phase one.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure that, that, that can be worked out. That's, I'm not, not too happy with that at all, because I know there's a tremendous need and desire to build single homes and, and beautiful homes. I'm impressed with phase one. I'm not impressed in, 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 in phase two. That's one thing. Another one is the apartments, two-hundred-and-eighty-eight units. I'm gonna have a hall, you know, even though this is very well put together, it's a beautiful piece of property. I, I, I like the commercial on the corner. It's, 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 you know, it's, fits, fits in nicely. But, two-hundred-and-eighty-eight units of apartments, I, I... And I understand, it's, it's what you've done is swapped it off from senior residential, which was two-fifty, and instead of building that, you went apartments.
Well, well, Mr. Grouse, to be accurate, when we look holistically, we reduced the overall density in twenty-twenty by almost two-hundred units. So we, we removed almost two-hundred units from the previously approved plan. And then, as I say, we, we went through the entire PUD amendment process for both the apartments, the single-family, the townhomes, which we're looking at tonight, and did, in fact, you know, go through all the preliminary engineering, preliminary site plan, the public hearing at that time, and received unanimous approval. So...
What year was that?
Eighteen months ago, twenty-twenty, July of twenty-twenty. And so this, this commission reviewed the apartments, reviewed the single-family, reviewed the townhomes, all those things at that time, and based on the plans submitted, which are exactly the same plans that are before you tonight, you know, found it, found it acceptable at that time as an acceptable amendment. So certainly, from our point of view, Ms. Missich mentioned at the beginning of the meeting of trying not to, to fight against a moving target. Our hope would be that, that the preliminary plans, as presented, in terms of density, uses and so forth, would continue to be, you know, honored by both the development team and the community. And obviously, the, the, the technical details certainly warrant discussion and review between preliminary and final, but our, our hope would be that, that the preliminarily approved plan by both the planning commission and the board would consent, continue to be consistent.
As you know, eighteen months ago was a different board. So you were in, not particularly this one, but Board of Trustees. So that, even that has changed. I, I'm only one vote. I'm gonna hold off on this, even though I, I, I appreciate the layout, but I still wanna talk to our planner and figure out if the sixty-seven frontage, if there's anything can be done about it. And this is, this is amendment, so we, Mr. Chairman, we, this is our input, then it goes back to the planner, or what's the procedure here?
We'll recommend, so, you know, throughout these phases, we've, we've approved the general concept. If not coming back with these two phases approved, ultimately, it goes to the township board to approve.
Okay. All right.
This has every... This is an amendment. This is, they've amended this back, the last time they amended this was...
Twenty-twenty.
Correct. It was a preliminary review, so the overall plan was preliminarily approved, and then they're coming in for each phase for a final approval. Okay.
If it's okay, I think I'd like to also make a comment. My name is Steve Mancini, three-seven-five-three-two, Hidden Valley Court, Clinton Township, Michigan. My family, my father bought this property in nineteen-seventy-four. Back then, it was zoned very heavy, mixed-use, multiple, I think it was C-two and something twelve. R-twelve, R-twelve. And so initially, when we came in front of, because I've been involved since two thousand and six, we came in with a much higher density, substantially higher, you know, big, ten-unit apartments or condos, and so our goal always was, from the very beginning, to put a buffer, a single-family buffer between the residents to the west. I personally went and met with a lot of the residents to the west, west of phase one, and so we built that buffer. That entire, it's actually seventy-eight lots, was built specifically to give the residents west of our development a buffer. But we always had the intent of increasing density as you go east and as you go south. And one of the biggest challenging things about this project has been the power line. I mean, it's just no secret, there is a major power line cutting diagonally through this property. So we've worked with the township, I go back to the days when Skip Macaron was the supervisor, trying to develop a plan that makes sense. We don't believe that this parcel of land, especially when you look at the power line component of it, can support all single-family homes, nor has that ever been the, the zoning or the intent. So we're trying to hit different markets with a high-quality product, and we think we've got a good product. We think we've spent a lot of time and money on traffic. The, the roundabout, I think, will slow traffic down on the Grand Boulevard. It'll also prevent cut-through traffic. But again, our goal is to work together, to develop a project that will, will sell. We're not residential builders, quite frankly, so this has been a difficult project, but we've been working closely with the, with the planning, planner, the planning commission, and, and the board to put together a good project. And I think we're there. I just don't think if, I don't think a senior component, we, we've got some, we own some senior centers. They're very difficult. There's, I think you, there's enough in this township, so we think that's a good fit for the south side of the power line. So we believe that that's, that's the right product for, for this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Grouse?
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to comment from the board? Okay. This is the only public hearing. The planning commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for township board evaluation. We are a recommending body, and the township board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The township board will make the final decision on this request. At that point, with that, anyone in the audience is free to offer their comments or answer any, ask any questions. And again, I just need your name and address, and then when you're done speaking, to make sure you sign in, please.
Hi, yes. My name is Ron Connicov. I live at five-four-three-six-three Lawson Creek Drive. I am the president of the HOA. Mr. Moffett, you just messed up my whole presentation.
That's what I tried to do.
Mr. Grouse, you, you got there, too, and Julie, you messed it up, and I think the other person, Turner, Mr. Turner.
He messes everything, so don't worry about it.
You mess, you, I, I, you know, this is trash. I took a couple of notes from Mr. Jim, Jim's presentation, and I wanted to give you some facts, not speculation. One question I have is, when you mentioned the reduction of density, what does that include? Is that, does that encompass the two-hundred-and-sixty unit?
Sir, sir, ask the board, and then we'll ask, and then we're gonna bring...
Does that include the two-hundred-and-sixty senior citizen complex? Because I don't understand what they deem as reduction, because you're taking a senior citizen housing of two-hundred-and-sixty units, taking it away, and none of those people will be driving, if, if any, and they certainly wouldn't drive north, actually, west a quarter of a mile, then north another quarter of a mile to get to twenty-five. There would be no need for any of those residents to go through, onto Lawson Creek Drive. The other suggestion or comment made by the developer is that they put a roundabout in to cut, to stop cut-through traffic from Van Dyke. Is anybody ever gone to Lawson Creek to see what that street looks like, driven through there at rush hour? I'll tell you what happens. Nobody will do that, because it'll take four to five minutes to get to twelve, to twenty-five, and then you're gonna sit at the light, not, no, there's no light, just sit at the street, intersection, and wait for the rush hour traffic to clear. And if that's, if it's in the morning, when the three schools are having their parents transport them down there, there's no way you're getting on twenty-five westbound. So nobody's gonna cut through. Worst case, and I've been there, if you sit at the light at twenty-five and Van Dyke to make a left-hand turn, at the most, at the worst traffic, you're gonna wait two cycles. That's four minutes. It'll take you longer than that to cut through, so nobody's gonna cut through. And there was the, I believe, the traffic circle is a false flag. It, it has no merit, because it's not gonna, that problem would never exist. This, the probability of traffic flowing to twenty-five off of Lawson Creek Drive is estimated by the developers to be minimal. I will tell you that you've got three schools, the lower, the middle, and the high school, all within a half a mile of Lawson Creek and twenty-five. So if you're a parent with any of the K-through-twelve students, you're not gonna go to Van Dyke. You're gonna go to Lawson Creek Drive, and you're gonna go up to twenty-five, yeah, twenty-five, and then you're gonna sit there. It's, 'cause those, those high school kids are not gonna let you in. I don't know if you've been in that situation, but it is, it's, it's difficult. So that's, I just want to clarify that, one, there's never gonna, there never was gonna be a cut-through. Two, you're taking two-hundred-and-sixty units of density belonging to people that don't drive, and you're somehow incorporating that into the reduction of density. It doesn't, doesn't compute. Oh. I wanted to get back to Lawson Creek Drive. I, I like to ask, has anybody walked that street, driven that street? Julie, have you been on that street? Mr. Moffett?
Yeah.
Do you know how it is a four-foot wide, narrower street than the next narrow street in that area? It is a condominium-sized street. So that says, if you park one vehicle and you got uncoming traffic, anybody attempting to come into that subdivision has to wait for that car to clear and move over, because it's not a boulevard. Most other subdivisions in this area have a boulevard street. That does not. Why did that happen? Because the original PUD had a second entrance, and they weren't gonna have that bottleneck. In the mornings today, in the winter, with the, not even fifty-nine homeowners in that subdivision today, that if you try to get out of there at school time, when the bus comes through, you've got parents there in the winter with the kids in the car keeping them warm, it's a bottleneck. You can't get out, and you can't get in. That's because the street is much smaller than any other street in the area. By comparison, you take Aurora Park, which is the next street over, that's the subdivision Jim mentioned, or, no, Steve, they have a street that's four-foot wider and a boulevard, and they have a total of a hundred and fifty homes, a hundred and fifty homes. They can go out twenty-five, or they can go out twenty-four. They have choices. Anybody getting onto Lawson Creek has no choice. It's twenty-five, or you go back home, or you go all the way around and go back out to Van Dyke. That's not palatable. It's not palatable. Again, I don't wanna get off on a tangent, because I had my whole spiel here. Oh, okay, let's go back. Oh, Julie, you mentioned that subdivisions of thirty or more, at thirty, you have to have an entrance, correct? What happens if you have sixty or seventy-nine?
You, you're required to have two entrances.
Where's the second entrance for our, for phase one?
It was the connection at the very south end of the development down...
At Van Dyke? That's a half a mile away.
Right.
A half, that's not, that's...
Again, we're not, we're not debating.
Okay.
But I think clearly, we understand that point.
It's a half a mile away.
That's why multiple members of the body, of this body, raise those various issues.
Okay.
You don't need to argue with us.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to my last point. This is where I was gonna summarize anyway, and I'll let you guys go home, 'cause I think we're the only people preventing you from doing that.
That's all right.
In two thousand and fourteen, you approved two entrances of the P, the original... Oh, by the way, I put the PUD on your desk. Did you see that PUD? Do you know where I got that from? The Legacy Estates website. Why do they have the original PUD? Did I say PUD or PUD? Why do they have the original PUD still on the website, advertising two entrances to the subdivision? I'll tell you why. If I'm a prospective buyer of a home, I am not gonna wanna live on a street that's built for minimal traffic, that's gonna be like a feeder street to a main intersection. I wouldn't do it. I've done that before, and I won't do it again. I asked a member of the Mancini group why that was, and he said he was gonna make it, make that change. That was last year. It's still, I took that today. That's, that's, that's interesting, that they're still showing and advertising the old PUD. So why was the original PUD with two entrances? Because it made sense. You made Lawson Creek Drive a small, narrow street with a non-boulevard exit. Knowing that that's a potential bottleneck, they, I'm sure the planning commission said you need a, a second entrance. The only reason they all have a second entrance is they're trying to maximize the, the front, the lotage. They wanna get as many homes as they can in there. They can talk all day long about trying to keep the density down, but the fact is, it's not a difficult decision. You put a second entrance in, and you alleviate the bottleneck. And I'll, I'll give you one last thing. I did, if you take just fifty percent of the phase four, remember, phase two is landlocked. It has no choice other than to get on the Lawson Creek Drive. That's sixty-seven homes. That's a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty vehicles. Everyone in our subdivision has two cars, some have three. So you're gonna dump another hundred and twenty vehicles onto a narrow street with one way out. They can't get... They can't get out to Van Dyke. Then if you take phase four, and just take half of that, and assuming there are school-aged children there, that's another 30 homes. So you have nine, 67 plus 30, it's 97, plus ours. You have a subdivision of, a blended subdivision of 200 residents, 200, with one exit. And it's not a boulevard exit, and it's a small street. I think the commission needs to internalize that and understand that the residents bought their homes on Lawson Creek Drive based on a PUD that showed two exits to 25, not one. Had we known that this was a possibility, I certainly, speaking for myself, would not have bought here in Shelby. Thank you for your time.
All right. Yeah, he knows, he knows, he knows he needs to sign in. He's not going to forget. Sign in. Anyone else wish to, to comment, ask any questions?
Hi, hi, oh, sorry. Hi, Jeff Bowright, 55493 Lawson Creek Drive. Just, Ron did a good job of explaining things. I just want to say, first of all, thank you very much for the construction lane coming in. We really need that. Our road is getting tore apart, so having the construction vehicles stay off the road, we're, we're very appreciative of that. I'm also on the board. Ron did a great job. All I'd like to say is, on 25 Mile right now, with the housing that we have, it gets backed up on there. The road is very narrow. If one car's making a left, there's not enough room for a car to turn right, so it just gets, it gets backed up. And then when you add more housing, then townhouses, and then this apartment complex on a road that's really a single-lane road, one car turning left, now you're having all that additional traffic hit that road. It's just, it's just not, I mean, it's tough now. So, again, you, you've heard it. I just wanted to add that to it on the side, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sign in, please.
Good afternoon. David Graham, 54155 Lawson Creek. You've already seen my email I sent to you, so I won't go through that, but a couple more notes that I've researched. Your own city ordinances, section 30, 136, paragraph B, "Street shall conform to minimum requirements," general specifications, and other requirements by Macomb County Road Commission. Macomb County Road Commission requires a minimum of two points of egress and ingress, minimum, two points. Acceleration, de-acceleration lanes and tapers are required along all existing sections of quarter sections, line roads, with proposed intersections. We don't have an acceleration lane. We have the deceleration lane. We do not have the acceleration lane off Lawson Creek. Closed-off space offsets, intersections are considered to be undesirable for reasons of public safety. It is there that proposed streets be offset a minimum of 250 feet from an existing street located on the opposite side. For Lawson Creek, this would be Apple Lane. I don't think it's 250. I think you're a couple of feet shy of 250, so it's not meeting the minimum. And if it is meeting the minimum, I mean, we're talking inches here. The standard width of a residential road is supposed to be 28 feet. That's the standard. Lawson Creek is 26 feet. So Lawson Creek is two feet short of the standard width. So for this to be, I don't, I don't see how this could be considered a viable egress-ingress for to meet the minimum two, if it doesn't have the acceleration, de-acceleration that's required. It's not the standard width, and it's also not meeting the off, the minimum required offset. It's this, this, Lawson Creek is a safety issue. And like we said before, the, the original PUD had another entrance off 25 Mile. That's what we're looking for. And one other comment is, I believe, the original PUD with the senior citizen complex also had it right off of Van Dyke. I believe when I bought my house, the literature that I was shown was that the senior citizen complex was on Van Dyke, so all that traffic was going to go on and off of Van Dyke. It wasn't going to come down Lawson Creek. It wasn't going to go into the other phases of the residential. That was going to be kind of off by itself. Now the apartment, now that with the, the pond up front, the drainage pond up front, that apartment, a lot of that is going to go down Lawson Creek. That was not within the original intent. So I know they said they reduced density, but like Ron said before, senior citizens generally aren't going to drive any kind of traffic. They have redesigned the interior roads, and a lot of it is now getting diverted to that one Lawson Creek Drive, which is not safe. Thank you.
My, my recollection that that senior center was always going to come off a central location, because there's, there are, there are, there were, there's a, there's water. You'd have to put a bridge over, and also the, with the Edison corridor. It's, I mean, I'm just saying, wouldn't believe it, but.
I even, I just remember from the literature when I bought my house, was that it was the senior citizen complex, then the drainage pond, then the rest of the residential.
I mean, it was set aside, but, but its entrance was, was coming off of Van Dyke, off a single entrance onto Van Dyke, but that's, okay. Anyone else wish to comment?
Good evening, commission members. Edward Zalansky. I'm from the law firm of Zalansky, Danner, and Fiorito, 75 North Main Street, Suite 300, Mount Clemens, Michigan. And I'm appearing on behalf of Phase One, the Estates at Legacy Association. And I have to say that I appreciate the amount of attention and care that the commissioners are showing for the residents. We've heard discussion about moving the bar now, moving the goalpost. The goalposts were set when the community was developed, and you've, I'm humbled by the eloquence of the board members who got up and gave the facts that they're seeing every day. The dimensions, the fact that Lawson Creek is actually not as wide as it should be by a couple of feet, the fact that there was a boulevard, but then no boulevard, and the fact that the PUD as established had the two entrances off 25 Mile Road. Now to take that out with an amendment to the PUD, that is certainly a case of moving the bar. The master deed for the estates provides that those lots were established in accordance with the approved PUD, not an amended PUD. And so there's a question whether the developer has the right to even expand his use by taking away that second entrance. When it comes to recognizing the impact that taking away the second access point off 25 Mile Road will have on the people of Phase One, keep in mind that they are subject to an easement on Lawson Creek for the benefit of the developer. And so any increase in traffic on Lawson Creek is going to be goring their ox there. So by taking away the second entrance off 25 from the PUD, you're really altering the terms of the master deed. And so the question is, really, can the developer contractually alter the provisions of the master deed for Phase One? You have the right to approve any changes. You don't have to justify that. And I think you have plenty of justification to say that, no, we're going to stick with the PUD that the members of Phase One relied on in terms of what will be the access points, two on 25 Mile Road. And looking, I mean, the planner talked about the issue of there being one access for every 30 homes. And we're deficient. We're deficient with two off of 25 Mile. Even if you add that back in, woefully deficient if you allow an amendment of the PUD to take that out. I don't see how it legally can be proper. There was a discussion in the master deed of limiting the number of units in the development to 300 units initially. Obviously, you're going well over that. And I think I've heard the commissioners talk respectfully of knowing about the change that has taken place in the township. Great for the township that it's expanded commerce, and the, and the residents have expanded. But there is an impact that says that you cannot approve an amendment to the PUD to take that second access point off 25 Mile. There are just so many provisions, planning standards. We're nowhere near meeting the necessary number of points of egress. Take one away is taking a bad situation and making it intolerable.
No, it's all right. It's okay.
I think the, you've gotten the details, the eyewitness details from the board members who have spoken on this. There's no question, but that taking away that second access point will not work on a practical level and does not work on a legal level. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Going once? Yes, sir, you need to sign in, please. Twice? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. To the planner, any final comments? Hang on, before we do that. Yeah. Any final comments from you?
So the one thing about the access off of 25 Mile, I think we're going to have to investigate that with the Macomb County Department of Roads to see their requirement. As far as the width of Lawson Creek, that's what was approved in Phase One. Matter of fact, I think it is lacking, no parking, or, yeah, no parking signs along one side of the road. Anytime a road is of that width, it requires no parking signage on one side of the road. So I know the code enforcement department is on this, has evaluated all the roads in the township that are of that width, and having Department of Roads go out and place no parking signs on one side of the road. The one thing that I think we need to keep in mind here is the property, the entire development is zoned R8. So R8 and commercial along, along Van Dyke. So a number of plans included, the original plans, matter of fact, included multiple family behind the single-family residential. So in, in the previous plans from 2014. So I think adding a single-family portion abutting Phase One is ideal in this situation. So that's the only things that I wanted to bring up, is that, that, you know, this property is zoned R8. So, you know, Mr. Epping and his team legally, by right, can come in and do apartments of multiple family in R8. It, it doesn't have to have a, a component of single-family.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Epping, you want to come back up, and Mr. Mancini, if you want to as well. We're just, to address some of the, the comments that were, and questions were, were. To begin with, the, the attorney for the association, I assume, made some same, some comments that somehow we have a legal obligation to, to, for that second. I'm not sure that's true or not. I've asked our council to, to look into that, and she'll report back to us. We'll review the master deed and get back, and get back to us. I guess one question I have for you, because there's, there were questions on people. Some residents had stated that they, the plan that they bought into showed two entrances on the 25 Mile Road. Do you know when, when the single-family homes were built, and when the last, you know, when the amendment that would have changed that was?
Well, there is, as you pointed out, there's several plans that came to you, even with some large retail uses that were never approved and therefore never amended. The original plan did show two entrances plus an additional two commercial entrances on, on 25 Mile, so that would have been about 2007. That plan also, though, showed 400, to Julie's point, 437 multiple-family homes behind the single-family. We've reduced that down to 144, so we've, we've, with the 2020 amendment, we've reduced, we've eliminated 293 multiple-family homes. We also eliminated the 250 senior apartments and replaced those with 288 apartments. So the senior residential went down, was eliminated. We added back apartments, plus 33. We reduced from 437 multiple-family to 144, so we eliminated almost 300, and we added 67 additional single families. So net-net, we reduced 188 homes, and part of that reduction was the elimination of the, of that additional access to 25 Mile Road, which really was meant to regulate and prevent the 437 multiple-family homes that were going to be immediately adjacent, immediately to the east, from going through the neighborhood, and took them out. Once it became single-family, same homes, we, we connected it. And in addition, based on the road commission and the uses across the street.
Yeah, and I can follow up with the history, but my recollection is, when we moved away, I think those were eight and 10-plex units that were exiting onto 25 Mile Road. I don't believe any versions of the single-family show exiting onto 25 Mile. The dates, I don't have exact, but this was changed, oh, probably back in 2016 timeframe. So the minute we moved away from the eight and 10-plex units in that immediate area east of Legacy One, that's when the access to 25 Mile was removed. And quite frankly, if I lived in that component too, I would prefer not having to, an entrance on the 25 Mile. But again, we'll look at that. We'll work with Julie. But pretty confident, when we eliminated those apartment buildings and condominium buildings, that's when that second access was eliminated. But we will confirm that.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to address the impact of the, of removing this, removing the senior and, and adding the apartments on, on traffic?
Well, it really became looking at the, the total capacity for senior housing in Shelby Township and adjacent communities. And it really was at that time, and I think continues to be, well-served and maybe saturated. You're exactly right, Mr. Chairman, that the, both the senior family and the proposed apartments will come into that center roundabout area, and then, you know, we anticipate a majority of them going east to Van Dyke Road, senior, senior housing. It was never meant to be age-restricted housing. It was never really detailed out in terms of memory care, anything like that. It was really always anticipated to be what we would call just age-restricted housing or, or senior apartments. So certainly, probably fewer cars, but, but never the anticipation that, that was like convolent care, where there'd be no cars.
Okay. No, no. You've had your opportunity, sorry.
If I'm not mistaken, too, I think the original PUD is, the original one that was submitted is part of the package of the.
It's in your plans, Jeff.
Yeah, if you can look, it's in a little box.
Okay.
To the lower left.
Yeah, good point.
Okay. I think the other two, the, so the roundabouts are more to, to slow traffic through. It's not, or, or do you think it's, that somehow that's going to divert traffic?
I don't think it's going to divert traffic, but the reality is, is that's a very long diagonal road, and we worried about people just driving too fast on it, so the roundabout in the middle is really meant to slow that diagonal road down.
Okay. The other two sort of chunks of issues had to deal with, with the safety of the road. And frankly, I prefer to, to let the road commission, or Department of Roads weigh in on that, and our planner will contact them to get that information. And then sort of the legality and sort of timing and legality of that, and our council will look into that and, and comment back to us. So, I mean, with that, I think, I think we've addressed what, and we've heard what everyone has said this evening.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I only had one more note, only because I came up with each speaker, and I appreciated their comments. I took notes, and we'll follow up.
Okay.
But there, at least the way I was interpreting a lot of the comments, it seemed to be kind of the continued belief that Lawson Creek will continue to be the only entrance. And I just want to come back to my earlier point, that the connection out to Van Dyke will be part of these proposed phases and will be, you know, part of that construction, so that immediately, not only Lawson Creek will enjoy that additional entrance, but, but the rest of the neighborhood.
Yeah. The reason, the reason I had asked the question originally of the planner, as to how many, how many homes typically, you know, that need the two, because there is somewhat of a concentration of single-family homes there with, effectively. Do you meet the, the requirement? Yes, there are two entrance points into this subdivision. The question I think we need to get our hands around is, okay, is it sufficient for, for what the uses are going to be?
The other thing I did want to comment that has. The other thing I did want to comment that hasn't been raised, you know, we were asked by the township engineer, if, AEW, if we'd be willing to build this component two through, I guess, two through five, to Macomb County standard in lieu of billing it to Shelby Township standard, which in, for example, asphalt, it's instead of six inches of-
I think it's four.
No, it'd be six inches of asphalt, I think we've agreed to eight inches or whatever the township standard, we've agreed to go with the Macomb County Road Commission standard. So any talk about this not meeting county standards, that's something we've offered, I guess the township is eventually intending on expanding or changing its standards, so we've, I mean, we're here to build-
Yeah, and we're going to look into the, the, the status of the width of the Lawson Creek Road.
And, and the depth, is I think what I'm speaking on.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some.
No, sir.
I'd like to have an opportunity. It's the same thing that happened to-
So this is, it's not, this isn't a debate, okay?
Well, they're making progress, covering my points.
To have a set of rules, we're following the rules.
That's the problem we had with the Zoom call last year, we could never have had a chance.
All right, sir. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Our recommendation this evening must be based on the following standards. Compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. This evening, we may recommend approval, we may disapprove of the request, or we may table it to evaluation, to evaluate the information received this evening. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, before I make a motion, I just want to make one comment. When you compare this-
Sir, why don't you make, why don't you make a motion?
Oh, I can, all right.
And then, then we'll comment on the motion.
Very good, okay. Then I'll make a motion to postpone site plan PUD application 22-12, Paul Jankowski, for Legacy Village Phase Two and Four, to give the applicant an opportunity to address the department and engineering comments.
Support.
Okay, moved by Turner, support by Snyder. Are there any questions on the motion, Mr. Turner?
Not really on the motion, but I would say, when you compare this plan to what we had back 15 years ago, this is a far superior plan. I know there were some comments made earlier about the plan itself. The only thing that I see, that's, I'm looking at, is this additional entrance off to 25 Mile Road. And the reason for postponing is to see if we can get some resolution on that with the county, to see if it's even feasible. I don't even know if that's going to be feasible to put that in there. If they say no, then it's all said and done. So there are a lot of things we need, and that's why I made the motion to postpone, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. I think there were, there were two things that, we do have the, our attorney's going to investigate the, the master deed, sort of the process, to make sure there are whatever legal requirements, because it's, we've been sort of challenged that there are somehow, we have some kind of legal culpability here. And then the second thing is that the planner is also going to talk to the Department of Roads and the township's-
Correct.
...engineers about some of the specific concerns over the adequacy and safety of, of what's, what's proposed. So if you'll amend the motion, just include those two.
Yeah, sure, no problem.
Support.
Mr. Snyder, thank you. With that, I will call the roll. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Larray?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Great, thank you. And at point which we come, if the petitioner comes back before with, with, with answers, anyone who has signed in or who received notice prior, will get notice of that meeting and be invited to come and attend. Okay? Next item is Planning Director's Report.
Okay, just one item on, on my report. We are working on providing electronic agenda packages for the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals, so this way, we would just send those packages to you electronically. You will be able to review them that way, and for the meetings, we will have laptops set up for all the Planning Commission members to be able to access all the documents via the laptop, so.
So do you have, do you have somebody that's going to teach Mr. Oppone how to turn on a laptop?
Phil, Phil, Phil's right next to him.
Phil's, Phil's on the-
Yeah, I'm such an IT person, yeah, no problem.
We're probably about a month away from doing that, but the agenda will be able, you'll be able to view the agenda online, including the public will be able to view the plans online as well.
Great, thank you. I see no one in the audience. No comments? Don't want to tell us how great your boss is?
Move to adjourn.
There's support?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
I've got enough time.